Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to start the meeting, please. Call the meeting to order August 28, 2018, USD 500. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Westphal, would you please call the roll?
Harold Brown, Maxine Drew, Janie Humphries.
Present.
Linda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown-McPage.
Present.
Nadine Nguyen.
Here.
Stacey Agar.
Present.
I entertain a motion, please, to approve the regular agenda. So move.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the regular agenda. All in favor say yes.
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 All opposed, no. Motion passed. Communications, Dr. Faust.
Yes, I have been visiting, meeting, and having a good time. It actually feels like I've been here longer than 20 days. I feel now like I'm a part of the family. Never felt like I wasn't a part of the family, but really do feel a part of family. Individuals are most welcoming. I mean, literally, come up and talk and I do apologize that if I'm not able to speak to everyone, talk to everyone at the same time. It is, you know, charged to my head and not my heart. But one of the things that I did want us to have knowledge of and take a look at is today we have all, well, most of our new leaders in the district. So we want them to come up so that the board can put a face with a name. And if we will have all new administrators, if you will join Dr. Strickland at the podium, you are a new administrator to our district.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, Dr. Nguyen, board. As Dr. Faust was saying, that this is a special group of people. Leadership is important at all levels, be that our student level, our teacher level. And these individuals here have chosen to take leadership roles and administrative positions. So I am going to facilitate them just stepping to the mic, saying their names, and what site or what department they are working with, because we are glad that they have accepted the leadership position to help grow our students here in KCK. So with that, I'll pass it to Shannon.
Hello, good evening. I am Shannon Shelton. I'm at Sumner Academy. And I brought my middle school ID picture of why I started in education, but I don't know if that's the time for it. Keep it moving. Okay, they're telling me step to the side, okay. Do you want me to kind of go to the front?
Good evening, I'm Angela Dunn. I'm the district's new Behavioral Health Coordinator under Student Services.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Sharon Walker. I'm Assistant Principal at Eisenhower Middle School.
Hi, good evening, I'm Melissa Veach, and I'm Assistant Principal at Washington High School.
I'm Sean Demery. I'm the new Social Emotional Learning Coordinator for Student Services.
My name is Kelsey Cohn, and I'm the new Special Education Coordinator over all of the Speech Language Pathologist and the Schlegel Cluster of Schools.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Gaville. I'm the Principal of Noble Prentice.
Good evening, I am Louis Neal, Principal at Douglas Elementary.
Good evening, I'm Tom Sowers, the Assistant Principal at Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center and Midland Trail Head Start. Thank you.
I'm going to take that thunder knot as ominous here.
We're inside.
Yeah, my name's Dr. Fred Skret. I'm proud to be the Principal at Central Middle School.
All right, and I'm Jerome Bobbitt. I'm the Assistant Principal at Northwest Middle School.
Board, we present to you our new administrators. We're happy that they are joining our administrator family, but they have, some of them have been with us and some of them are joining back with us, but they serve important roles and they will help grow our students and help them achieve their goals. So with you all, thank you for the work that you have done in the last few days and thank you for the work you will do in the days to come.
That's right. Thank you. And once again, we thank you and look forward to having a closer relationship with each and every one of you.
So, board, if you would notice that a lot of our administrators are out there, a lot of our principals, but what you'll find is later on, what I've asked them to do is we're going to be talking about their schools and their data, so I thought it would be most befitting for them to be here in ownership. This year, what we're doing is looking at leadership and leadership styles and being accountable for leaders in our schools. So later in the meeting, you will hear from our Executive Directors and Dr. Strickland, but our principals will be here and we will get more information. We're going to share with you during our board retreat when we decide that date. And so they'll give you a more extensive background on their data, but our principals are here, just so, of course, you can see the faces and you probably know the faces of the principals in the buildings, but because we're going to be talking about their data, I thought it would be most befitting for them to be here.
Thank you. Just two events that I had the privilege to attend. I mentioned last meeting, I'm a member of the Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund, and so the state of Kansas funded a million dollars to be matched by Windat County, a pilot for early childhood. And the short turnaround, they were quite successful. So on August 15th, I was able to attend the Start Young kickoff at the Children's Cabinet that will expand, still, we need a lot more capacity, but our early childhood programs. The children, the Conservancy is the lead agency there. And then had the privilege to attend a prayer vigil for our USD 500 children, parents, after school programs. It was quite impactful and reassuring to get not only prayers, but words of encouragement from community members who said that they were with us and that we were moving in the right direction. So that was quite reassuring. Other board members.
Over the weekend, I attended the KSAB Executive Board of Directors Meeting, and we also had the legislative start their meeting, but it was quite productive as we go forth looking at where we're going and some of the new stuff coming in.
Well, we also attended the Education Sunday Services at First Baptist Church. Dr. Faust was there with us, and it was a very, very nice service. They reiterated how much they support our kids in our district, and it's really good to see everyone come together like that for a good cause. And, see, I went to the substitute teacher orientation to find out what we teach our substitute teachers, and that was very informative. There's a lot of stuff they have to learn before they come into our classrooms, but they were all there, very anxious to learn and ready to get started. So, of course, this next week starts all of our activities, sports, football games, soccer, volleyball. So I hope to see a lot of you people at our games. Dr. Skaggs is there grinning, but it's fun to get out, to see the kids perform, and get to see our parents and administrators. I don't want to forget that we get to see you guys, too. So, thank you.
And I visited a couple of schools during the second week of school starting, Claude Hike, White Church Elementary, and I think, it was one more, Frank Russian, maybe? Oh, Bethel, and Bethel. Those are the schools I visited during the second week. It was so interesting to be able to learn so much information about those elementary schools and how they vary from small to larger and how the new additions really helped them out that we were able to get added onto their schools, and they were up and ready. And it was so awesome just to be able to see that energy from the children and the teachers and the principals. So thank you so much for those principals who took me around for tours and let me see your building.
And I, too, had the opportunity to attend the prayer vigil, and that's important. If you're not of faith, if you just meditate and think good thoughts for our district so that everyone will be successful, administrators, the students, the parents, everyone, and it takes a whole village. So we need the village out to come to the meetings, to come visit the school, to be a part of PTA, all of that, in order for it to work. So I'd like to thank that particular church for sponsoring that for us.
Who was that?
It was Beren Fellowship, 1119 North Fifth.
Well, thank you, and again, we are, we make every effort to get into the community, share the word, and welcome comments and anything that the community has to say. With your permission, board, we'd like to skip over the community comment for a second because of late attendees and move right to board updates. Dr. Faust?
Yes. So Amanda Chavez?
Right there.
I'm sorry. So if I can get Amanda.
No. Right here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Right there, right there.
Yes, so we're asking that the board would accept the formal information or item of reports for the Safe and Secure School Grants as submitted by Dr. Kelly Mathers, Chief Operating Officer, Amanda Chavez, Resource Development Officer, as recommended. And we received a grant, and she's going to share with you a PowerPoint over the grant and what it means, and if you won't, go ahead and start for us.
Good evening, board, and Dr. Faust.
Evening.
I'm here to share information with you about the Safe and Secure Schools Grant that we received. The state of Kansas distributed $5 million in state grants for security features to improve safety for children and staff in our schools. The Kansas State Board of Education developed tentative standards for safe and secure schools that guided the areas of funding that we were able to ask for. Requested funds must be matched by the requesting school district, and our matching funds will actually come from funds that were already allocated from our bond for updates for security. The state received 153 applications totaling over $13 million in asks. Prior to making recommendations, they received input from other agencies, including the Attorney General and the Kansas Highway Patrol. We received our full ask of $223,000, I'm sorry, $223,500. So we will then match that ask from them. In order to determine what our pressing needs were, I met with Chief Horn and Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties, and Joe Fives, Director of Technology and Information Services, and we talked about what some of the pressing needs are around the district in regards to safety and security. After compiling a list of needs, we submitted our top three priorities that fell within the funding areas. So the first one that we asked for funding for is perimeter door sensors. And this is important to note that this is not just for the main entry and exit doors, this will be for all doors around schools, so we know when someone is opening or closing a door or if it remains open. That will be for all schools, $5,000 allocated for each school. The next update will be the Vigilon software, and this will be purchased for about 1,600 cameras. The software is a computer interface used both for surveillance video cameras and door access control. We currently have it in some buildings, but other buildings are using a different software called Access, and it only connects to the surveillance cameras, not the door access control. And lastly, we're going to make camera updates to 720 resolution or better, and this will be done at Argentine, Rosedale, Arrowhead, Carruthers, and Fairfax. And these are to physically replace older cameras, the difference between Blu-ray and We received the funding, and some of the work has already started as far as the software updates. Once the funding is spent, we will submit an update around February 1st and then a final report June 2019. Any questions?
Questions, board?
Good job.
Thank you.
So we need to accept the report.
I move, we accept the report.
Been moved in second to accept the Safe and Secure School Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the report. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion passed.
Okay. The next item is from our bond update. It's going to be, we will have.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, board members. Got the nod. So I appreciate it. Let me get the slide open. Can you read that? Now, we practiced this. I just want you to know, we practiced this before we came, so I will turn it over to them and let them take care of it. That's good. Right there. Thank you. Thank you, John. Board, good evening. Just want to give you a quick update before I turn it over to Mark. On your board docs, we have the regular monthly update sheet, which is the spreadsheet that you see on the screen. What I'm showing to you is the same projects, haven't changed. Those work packages will remain consistent. This month, we spent nearly $10 million for the month of July. I kept informing you that those expenditures would start to increase, and they certainly have this last summer. We've been extremely busy. Mark will give you that update momentarily. So I wanted to show you that ongoing total. We do not have a new GMP at this point. The end of September, we will be bringing to the board the most recent GMP, which was for Rosedale Middle School and for that addition. So that will be at the end of September. So the GMP list remains the same as it's been for you in previous board meetings. Couple of quick updates from me. One was the GMP for September 25th board meeting. Targeted construction starts on that addition and those renovations first of October, if all goes well. We will be putting out to bid the Carl Bruce Middle School package in August, mid-August, with a bid date, meaning that they come back. We opened the bids in September, mid-September, with anticipated construction starting in November of 2018. John Fisk Elementary School out to bid the end of August, and bids come back in at the end of September with a construction start date for that addition in December, weather permitting, I'm sure. And the Bruny Elementary School were out to bid, again, mid to late September. At this juncture, bids coming back mid-October, anticipated construction of that particular school starting again in January, of course, weather dependent. If it's storming with lots of snow, might be difficult to do that. But we're excited about kicking off those major projects as well, and everything's queued up and ready to go, and we will keep you informed and abreast of what we're doing with each of those projects, so. Prior to letting me turn it over to Mark Stube, the Assistant Director of Physical Properties, to show you the fun things, like the pictures, just a couple of comments about the work we did this summer, and Mark. We were busy this summer, and I don't want to steal any thunder from Mark, as he will explain probably through the pictures very quickly how much work we actually accomplished. We, I told you at the last board meeting that we had essentially kind of tore up 12 schools, and the principals are probably here and can attest to that, and we did, and because of their leadership and support and focus, we were able to put those back together. We ran into challenges, absolutely, as we went. We've learned a lot. We even had a lessons learned meeting with our team so that we continue to improve, but we actually had a lot of successes, and I just want to emphasize the successes as well as the challenges that we have. Mark will review with you some of the photos of the sites that we worked in this summer and give you a brief update. However, prior to that, I'd be remiss if I don't mention that Mark has tendered his resignation. He's given us a month's notice, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that Mark has done on the bond referendum. And frankly, frankly, if it wasn't for Mark, I'm not sure, we would have had the 12 schools open, so truly kudos to him and working with the principals, and I think that you see their relationship through those applause. But he will be truly a loss to the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and we thank you for the hard work and dedication and commitment to the district. We wish you the best in your new endeavors and are excited for you, but saddened for us. So with that, would you mind doing a last bond report for the board?
It was really busy. We did, if you don't include Wellburn and Gloria Willis, we did about $1 to $1.2 million a week. So that was challenging. So I'll just run through these here. This is pictures of Wellburn. I don't know if you've driven by, but it looks like a school. They'll be in the dry, which basically means this rain would be on the outside of the building, probably towards the end of September. So we're on a really good trajectory there for finishing on time for next summer, for moving in next August. Once you get in the dry, that's a major threshold in a project, because then you control it a lot more. So that building's coming very well. It's very attractive, I think, to the design team did a good job picking. I'm not real good on colors and stuff, but it's built well. I do control that, but I don't control the colors. That project's going very well. Most of the precast is up. Like I said, the roof is almost done, the windows will be going on, they'll be doing drywall and painting by early October. They'll be starting to work on the finishes. There's a, it's going to look like it went really fast and then like we did nothing, because we're inside the building, you won't see us running around. But Wellburn's going very well.
This is the arrow key.
Okay. Let's see here. Yeah, you can see some inside pictures there, they're already hanging duck work, things that are, if water were to get in there right now, won't hurt it.
You can keep scrolling down, the next one should come up. It's not coming up.
Okay. You want to go to the next slide? Sorry. Okay, so this is Windat High School. So you're going to see a lot of similarities to what I'm telling you. Windat will still be under construction through the end of September. We knew that going in. There's still some restrooms being worked on and a little bit of locker rooms, but most of the project is done. What you're going to see in similarities is we're working on punch lists, we're working on final details. The buildings are substantially complete, but we're still chasing small things in the projects. Some are pretty important small things, but we're still chasing some of that. Let me scroll, can we scroll up a little bit here? So just in these pictures for Windat, the one, the upper right, that picture of the clock, that's the clock that used to run all the bells. That worked right up until we unhooked it. We kept all the parts. We could hook it up again if we could find somebody 80 years old that knows how to hook it back up. But that's a 1930's computer you're looking at right there, but it's beautiful. And the woodwork there, we dismantled the check-in counter and we reused the wood from that. So I think that's a pretty nice detail. The courtyard there, we, all that was a pile of dirt. We put a Tracco in there, dug the whole thing up, and then put it back exactly the way it was. And then this picture on the bottom left, that's a history wall. We took a lot of photographs that the school supplied us with and built a, basically wallpaper with the pictures. So we did that at Windat and at Sumner, our two most historic buildings. So that's what you're seeing there. You know, the other projects we did there, the kitchen, the plumbing, we reworked all the plumbing in the building. So you probably have half a mile of new copper in the building, new sewer lines, everything works. Sounds, plumbing's not really exciting, but it's pretty important, so. We reworked the science rooms. We reworked the secure entry. It was a major undertaking on a building that's on the National Historic Register, and if you haven't toured it, the architects did a good job of blending the old and the new. So it was a very successful project. Let's go down through the next one, if I can, maybe. Maybe I can do it. Okay, this is Claude Hike Elementary. Did a new addition there. We did six rooms, so that addition finished. We did a secure entry there. We did a little bit of power upgrades. Basically, it's operational. Again, we're chasing a few little gremlins, but that's normal on a new building. But just the expression on the teachers' faces when they came in and saw their new rooms was just priceless, and the students, too. So it was kind of fun.
Also, they mentioned there was one bathroom they had to share in that one hall. Now each of the rooms for the kids have.
For the kindergarten?
Have a bathroom.
The kindergarten rooms have a bathroom. That is our standard on any new construction, the kindergarten rooms will have bathrooms in them. So it was, that was pretty fun work on that one. Let's see here. Eugene Ware, we built a kitchen in there, or upgraded the kitchen. It was more of a camper kitchen. It was pretty small. Now it's a full-service kitchen that they can cook and prepare the meals on-site. And that's operational. We did do the secure entry, which caused a reconfiguration of the office, and we reworked quite a bit of IT infrastructure in that building. And a new teachers lounge and some office space. Morris was primarily, let me go down to the picture. This is the new secure entry. Before, you could get in the building and you could go almost anywhere in the building without being compelled to go into the office. Now you have to go through the door and go through the secure entry. And that's all new construction. We had to bump out the wall and rebuild it. Stony Point North was another new addition. That was four classrooms. I think we did three first grade and one fourth grade, if I recall right. Plus, we reconfigured the offices. We kind of flipped the offices to the other end of the building. We changed the flow of traffic. I think it flows better from what the staff has told me. We reconfigured the nurses' office from a camper nurses' office to a real nurses' office. It's huge now. Put in some ADA-compatible restrooms, which we didn't have before, and the old office, we turned that into a teachers' lounge. So it was, it was a lot of work. Let's see, what else we got here? Grant Elementary. So Grant is, the new addition is still under construction. That'll finish over Christmas break. We'll move into it over Christmas. But we did do the secure entry inside, and we did the kitchen inside, the new kitchen. And we remodeled a room upstairs that was the library. Right now, it's still a classroom, but when we move back in, it'll get converted into a teachers' lounge. And a room downstairs, it'll ultimately be the new library, but it's still a classroom right now till we move in the new addition. So it's a staged approach. But the work for Phase 1 of the project is complete, and then again, over Christmas, we'll move into the new wing. Arrowhead Middle School, honestly, of all the projects, if you go to Arrowhead, it'll be the most profound change when you go in the door, because you won't know where you're going when you walk in. It's totally different, and it's a major improvement. We fixed the air conditioning and heat. It actually works in all of the building now, instead of most of it. The library, this is not the greatest picture, but we put new ceilings in, we did the floors, we painted it, and that's pretty much what we did in a lot of the classrooms. It was more of a cosmetic upgrade. It started out as we were running new duck work. Well, we couldn't see that, that would be ugly, so we put a ceiling in. Well, we can't put a ceiling in if we don't paint the walls. If I'm going to paint the wall, I got to do the floor. So it kind of cascaded, but it really made a difference in that building. And it's, it's very nice. It's a huge upgrade for that building. There's a picture of the secure entry, the office reconfiguration, and a teaching academy there. Gloria Willis is well underway. Gloria Willis is about a month behind Wellburn, because we started a little later. I would say they'd be in the dry towards the end of October, I'm hoping. That's proceeding very well. Let's see here, there's more pictures of Wellburn. So I don't have slides, I didn't get them in time. Sumner, we did 100% plumbing renovation in the original section of the building. There's two newer wings we didn't do, one from 2009, one from 1973. We didn't do the plumbing in those, because it was already copper, but the original structure, we did 100% plumbing replacement. Upgraded the restrooms. I think they did a good job blending the old and the new. Secure entry upgrades, the science rooms there, huge improvement. They're very attractive. Still have a few details to work out for the science teachers as we're working with those, but it was a lot of work at Sumner in a very But it was a lot of work at Sumner in a very short time. At Windout, we started in January. At Sumner, we started the day after the kids left and we got it done in the 10 weeks. It was, we were hauling the mail. It was busy there, so. At Washington, we've completed the academy spaces there, three, oh, five academy spaces since that was completed. We also ran into a few issues at that building where we had a leaky wall and I didn't want to put new drywall on a leaking wall, so we fixed the exterior wall, too. Schlegel, we put in six new academy spaces there, remodeled those. And then Harmon, there's five spaces, kind of where the old lockers were. That really is quite stunning there, too. Next year, we'll replace the new entryway and the ceilings. At Harmon, you can actually see in the hallways now because we have new lights in portions of it. So we'll complete that over the next two years, complete the hallway renovations, too. So I think that's everything we worked on. It was busy. Everyone was challenged. We had hundreds of people in our buildings working every week. I want to mention, too, our custodial staff put in a superhuman effort to get these buildings ready. So the guys from the shop, you know, J. Dunn built the rooms, but we had to take a new room and tweak it for our uses. And that was the shop and the custodial team did a superhuman effort. You know, I wish we had finished a little sooner. I wish you had an extra two or three weeks to work out all the gremlins, but we accomplished a lot this summer. And we did get open. I would have preferred to have a little bit more time, but we did open and we're still chasing a few things. But overall, I think the principals would agree, they're phenomenal spaces and it was successful.
Well, thank you for your outstanding work and we wish you a million more years of success.
Well, thank you.
And we know you'll come back to visit us.
Yeah. I'm allowed to be a volunteer here, too.
Great. Those are the hardest jobs, you know those.
I know that.
Others?
Any others?
I just want to say, the buildings looked beautiful. When I visited the new areas and spaces, the teachers were excited, the kids were excited. And just thank you for putting in that extra work because it really did matter to our students and teachers. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So from that, I ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informal item, an update on the board projects as submitted by Dr. Kelly Mathers, Chief Operating Officer, and it's recommended by myself.
I'm moving second to accept the bond update gladly. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed.
The next item for us is from our Human Resources update. And so this comes in a twofold operation where we will have, we'll hear from our interim Assistant Superintendent, and then we're also going to talk about the flow chart.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen. And good evening, Dr. Faust. I'd like to say that the Human Resource Department worked extremely hard under some of the conditions of hiring. So, and we're here to celebrate our successes as well as share with you what we promised we would do a couple of meetings ago. So our department has worked to put together a PowerPoint presentation for you today. And I've been practicing with them over the telephone as to what I would say to them. So the first lady that we'll present to you is Ms. Cynthia Folks, Director of Recruiting. And she'll report on our vacancy report. And please save your questions for at the end of her presentation. And then the other two ladies, Mrs. Amy Jo Troyer, Director of Certified Personnel, as well as Mrs. Jody Mitchell, Director of Classified Personnel. And they will present the hiring flow chart. So you really have to be patient with that because they're going to take you in various directions, back and forth, and for you to understand just how this happens. Just think, I'm a principal and I have an opening. First thing I have to do is have to fill out an AFT, Authorization to Fill. So with that, I will ask, oh, thank you.
I'm a little sharp.
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, and Board members. I am here to present an update on the August vacancies. One of the first things I'd like to do is, because this is not the usual time, but I would be remiss if I did not say a very big thank you to all of the administrators, principals, vice principals, and hiring managers who are here this evening. Because HR does not go out by themselves. I don't go out by myself. So if there is anything that is in need, especially on the certified side, there have been days that we have driven hundreds of miles together. There have been days where the school district was closed, but a couple of our administrators and our HR personnel were at KCI Airport attempting to go to Spelman and a couple of other places in the south. And they stayed all day long. And after the fourth time that the plane was, didn't take off, they finally called me at 6 o'clock that night and said, "We can't get out of here." And I said, "I just have to thank you because I'm at home and I'm under the covers and you're at KCI trying to get out." So I just want to express my sincere gratitude for the way that they go out with me, the way that they actually are here throughout the summer, sometimes coming in off of their vacations in order to make sure that we have ample representation to meet and greet and decide about our applicants. So thank you very much. With that in mind, I am presenting the August update. As you can see, July 24th, when I stood before you, at that time, we had 61 vacancies. And as of August 27th, we are down to 33 vacancies. With the competitiveness in me, that's still not good enough because I know that any time that we don't have the right people standing before our students, then others have to jump in and make sure that they can help cover everything. So one of the things that I would like to do is usually, I know that the board would like to see by high school, middle school, elementary, and special education, just what are some of those content areas. So for your review tonight, the next three slides actually contain some of the areas that we still need teachers within. On the high school level, you can see that it's primarily business and biology. What I will say to the administrators, just because I received a couple of emails from them as we were setting here, that this is only up to date as of last week. So I had to make sure that it was in on time. So if there's anything I'm not aware of, we certainly can discuss that later. For the middle school, you can see that with the exception of one or two in the math area, that for the first time, we have a need, more so for ELA, career exploration, targeted literacy, and art. Art, fine arts, I believe I said in July, is usually an area that's very well covered. We rarely have a need for that, but because of the amount of electives and things that we need in order to go forward with everything that leads into Diploma Plus, we have more of a need. And I suspect next year, we'll have more of those needs as well. Last but not least, special education. And I did not skip over elementary. Elementary and early childhood from the general education side has been filled. So with special education at all levels that you see here, we do have, however, high school, middle school, and elementary where we are still in need of individuals. But again, I point out, July 24th, about a month ago, we needed 28. We're down to 19 and we're still chipping away at all of that. I would just want to say in terms of action plans, I know that next month, we are presenting our yearly review, annual review from the human resource side, which will contain a lot of data and statistics that you wanted to see from the recruitment side. So one of the things I just want you to know is that we are collaborating from the recruitment side with a variety of different groups. One of those groups is KSDE. We were very excited that they had an opportunity to visit us, both the director and the Assistant Director over Licensing Department. And they were with us for a few hours earlier in August. That meeting went so well that we actually have another opportunity that they are actually going to be with us again in another week or so. And at that time, we're going to talk more about a variety of licensing opportunities and pathways that we have yet to utilize here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So that's everything from looking at what it takes to qualify, the right paperwork that could go in, so that we can fully utilize what KSDE, Kansas State Department of Education, has for us to use in terms of adequate licensing or alternative licensing to get more applicants to these hiring managers. Another thing that we're looking at from the recruitment side, or actually we're beginning the stages, is that we're looking at an ambassador program. You will hear a little bit more about that. That's a collaboration between our recruiting team as well as the teachers. And so the teachers had a wonderful idea at the same time that we were talking about an idea. So we're going to collaborate on an ambassador program. Diploma Plus, there is a big opportunity for concurrent teachers who have the backgrounds, primarily the master's degree and other things in their particular content area, that would be teaching some of those Diploma Plus courses that we need and that we'll be getting in more and more as our students progress. And so with that in mind, we're collaborating in that particular way to make sure that we might be able to look a year out and look and see what some of those courses may be that would be needed. And therefore, that gives us much more lead time. And then finally, we've, we're turning over a lot of different things. We are even looking at retirees who we might be able to approach about particular collaboration for not only substitute, but as well as some of the courses that we have. And it's back on the road. What used to be a nine-month or maybe around an eighth-month travel period, typically in a 12-month period, the best practices say that we need to be out there 12 months a year traveling. So you will be seeing a lot more of some of the suggestions you have made and some of the other things that will be happening next month when we present some of the places that we will be going.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I just have a quick question about the business portion that's open in many high schools. I was looking at the job description and it appears that they need a Kansas Teaching Certificate for that. I know you said there are different ways to get teachers in the classroom. Is there any exceptions to getting a temporary teacher's license for the business area? Or can it be an entrepreneur coming in? Or what options are available for that?
So outside of the traditionally prepared license, there are alternative pathways, such as with our fellows program. There's also a visiting scholar's license that we have yet to utilize, and that's one of the areas that we're going to be talking about. It gives a renewable license one year at a time. The CTE area, there are some requirements that you have to fulfill if it is a part-time career technical educator or if it's a full-time. And so what is important now is not just telling me that we need a business teacher, but actually letting me know what percentage of time is that business teacher teaching in certain areas? Because that is one of the requirements that KSDE did say that they are very much looking at in order to make sure that they can or cannot get their CTE license. So some of that type of work is going on, but it does open up more of a variety of individuals that we might be able to utilize.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we look forward to hearing more and looking forward to much success. Thank you.
I'm going to invite my colleagues come up and we're going to go right into the flow charts. I think I may have the first page, so I'm going to do that and get out of the way. Okay. So what you have before you is the job posting process. And one of the things that was alluded to by Mr. Thompson is the fact that it all starts with an authorization to fill. So one of the things that I just wanted to express is that nothing really starts directly in our office. When you decided what the budget would be, then that was reviewed and looked at and how that works into the overall job posting process. That means anything that identifies what the actual job is and what it should be. So the first, I'm not going to go frame by frame, but I'm going to talk at a general level. And certainly, if you have questions after all three of us present, I can, I will be here. For the first area, there are four levels of approval. One, that it goes to the Executive Director of Finance Department. The second level would be the HR directors, the two ladies that are here beside me. And then it comes to the recruitment level. So really, that first approval comes based upon a variety of different things with the hiring manager. And the hiring manager puts in that particular authorization to fill, what we call as an ATF. And when they put that in, it must match up with the budget, it must match up with a job description. If there is a new job description or a job description needs to be modified, a lot of that is looked over by the HR directors. And then when it finally gets to the recruitment side, what we are really looking for with that authorization to fill is to make sure that, a variety of things. Is there a job posting already out that will take care of that? And possibly, did the hiring manager not know that? Is there something that needs to be updated? Do we clearly have what is an exemption or non-exempt classification? So we're looking for things like that, just a final look at. And once that has been determined and everything has been approved on those four levels, then it actually becomes a job posting. You can see, however, that if it is not approved, it all goes back at various times, back to the hiring manager so that they can determine what it is that they best need. If everything is approved at that point, then the job is posted and it is advertised. And so depending on if it's a certified position or a classified position, that's what will dictate the different areas that we will use in order to go forward and post that and subsequently advertise that, whether that is advertising for free on various boards, whether it is, needs more support because it is a hard-to-fill area. For example, if we are having a hard time finding science individuals, we not only may be at all of the colleges and the nonprofit organizations that deal with that, but we might open it up to some of our STEM areas, some of the STEM schools. We make sure now that it's not only within a two-state region, which is what it primarily was about two to three years ago, but we make sure that we're heading some of those areas that would contain a national appearance out in some social media area. I do connect with the communications and marketing department as well on some of these efforts. The job posting then moves to the fact that we may receive the applications. Once we receive those applications, then there is a very high-level prescreen that occurs with the recruitment team, myself and the recruiting assistant that I currently have. And so with reviewing those areas, we will look at, on a high level, some of the qualifications that you see under education. If it's a license, license has to be there in some way, or the ability to get that license in an alternative way. Otherwise, it can't go anywhere. We may look at if there is an amount of years of experience that is required as a minimal effort. If the hiring manager feels that they need three to five years, the minimum says three, we're going to look for that three. So those are some of the things that would be looked at from a prescreening perspective. So, those are some of the things that would be looked at from a pre-screening perspective. Because it's just at a high level, we leave it to the hiring managers to look at everything else when that is moved on. So, once that is moved on, then we actually have emails or some type of communication that goes out to the applicant. So, for example, we cannot see applications that are partially completed. We can only see it when it is fully completed. That applicant then has a number that comes back to them saying that it has been submitted and it has been delivered. Once that happens, then there is an email acknowledgement that confirms that and welcomes them to the application process, gives them some other general information. At the time that we pre-screened, there is another email communication that goes out, and that could be a variety of things. It might say, "We need further clarification about your license." It may say, "Application under review." It may say that it's been screened. Some of those statuses are on the front page of our website, and some of those statuses state what it means, but by no means would that be all. So, for example, we need license, we may need references. Some of that information is there, and emails will go out and can be followed, they're date stamped, so it says what time that went out. And then, at that particular point, when we get to the point where the qualified applicants are moved forward to the hiring manager for their review, that's where the job posting process overall stops. I'm going to stop here because it will begin to pick up again on some of the other flow charts, so that you can see the end of the process where we come back in.
Would you prefer questions afterwards?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, board. Dr. Faust. Oops, that was way too far. Thank you. Okay, so where Cynthia left off, I will pick up, and we are going to talk about the candidate selection process and the offer process. So, we're going to kind of flip-flop between two charts, and I'll flip-flop here on the screen, but, so we'll start with the candidate selection process. So, the hiring manager, which Cynthia spoke about, that would be the principal, it could be the director, department manager, whoever has the vacancy is the hiring manager. So, the hiring manager would receive candidates in their queue. So, through the applicant process, then, like Cynthia said, the application comes in. If they have all of their qualifications, that she talked, the high-level screen, then Cynthia's team would forward those candidates out to the hiring manager for their review. So, then, the hiring manager would then schedule and conduct their own interviews. So, they're looking at all of those applications, resumes. They are then scheduling and conducting their own interviews with those pool of candidates that they received, and they use predetermined interview questions. So, they have a select, a selection of interview questions that they will use, and the positions are done through panel interviews. So, they would then select who they would like to be on their panel interview, and then they would, of course, ask the same questions of every candidate, record those answers, and then we obviously keep those documents. So, then, once the hiring manager selects who they would like to hire, they would then forward an email to the HR team saying that they would like to hire a specific candidate. So, they send that to us. There's a certain format that we use, just so that it can be a priority, so that we see that it comes into a priority mailbox. Obviously, those are high priority, so we want to get to those right away. So, they, we have a certain format that we use. The recommendation for hire comes into the HR team, and then we are, we are going now to, excuse me, do the offer process. So, if you look at your candidate selection, there's a blue box there that you, that you have. We wanted to kind of hone in on that a little bit, just because that's kind of very broad. So, if you flip to the next slide, oops, there it is. We kind of honed in a little bit on this and didn't have enough room on the other page. So, we move over to that slide, the candidate offer process. We can dive in a little bit deeper to what this means. So, when the recommendation for hire comes into HR, so then, there's some certain steps that we take, just to ensure that we're following proper procedure, that some of the things that we're looking at is, we're going to make sure that the applicant that they have recommended has actually applied for a position. They do have to go through the application process, they do have to have an application on file, we double-check that they, that they, that they have done that. We're also looking for references, they do have to have references, and so, they do have to, you know, have that. And if they don't, then we would then reach out to them to say a variety of things, either your references haven't responded, you don't have references. So, then, we allow the candidate, we have that conversation via phone, and we allow them time to then, they can update references, they can provide new references, and then we would have time then to do our due diligence to make sure that the references have responded. We're also looking for confirming credentials, again, just to make sure that they have proper credentials or can get those credentials. And then, we're also double-checking if they are a previous employee of the district, their rehire status. So, we're double-checking that as well, to make sure that they are, can be hired back to the district. Let's see. So, if, if they are a no rehire, that could be for a variety of reasons, breach of contract, for example, a non-renewal, if you're a termination for cause, that would be considered a no So, then, once all of those things are done, we would then actually prepare the offer to extend to the candidate. So, we can flip back now, here. And so, we're now into the, it looks pink there, red or pink boxes, so we're actually preparing the offer and going to extend the offer to the candidate. So, what we're doing in HR is, we're looking again at their resume, seeing where they would fall on the salary schedule for classified. It's based on experience for certified, it's obviously based on negotiated contracts, so we're doing that. And then, we contact the candidate via phone, letting them know what their offer is. The offer is contingent upon successful completion of a background check, tuberculosis test, and our new hire paperwork process, and that paperwork process would vary depending on if you're a police officer, if you're a teacher, if you're a classified employee, there's different pieces that have to be completed based on the position. Obviously, if you're a police officer, there may be some additional things that you have to do for that process. We also talk about contract details, if they are someone under a contract, we would talk through details, we go through health insurance, leave types of things. So, it's, it's probably a five to 10-minute conversation. You know, a lot of them have a lot of questions, obviously, because they are trying to make a decision on if they'd like to work for us. We, a lot of people do accept right there on the phone, but we do give them 24 hours in order to think about the, the offer and respond back. So, but a lot of them, they do offer on the phone. So, if they decline the offer, then what we have to do is go back to the hiring manager to notify them that candidate has declined the offer. And then, they would hopefully have a second person kind of in queue, based on their interview that they've conducted. Sometimes, they don't. Sometimes, they need to go back out and start the process again, so that, they, they would have the option to do that. If the candidate accepts the offer, then we obviously go through the process of getting them onboarded, which we'll talk about next, but Cynthia's team is then notified that a candidate has accepted the offer, and then that position would then be closed. Any applicant that is in the pool would receive communication via email, saying that the position has been closed, you know, thank you for your, your interest in the position. A lot of times, for those that were part of the interview pool with a panel, they would reach out to them via phone, just because they've already had that kind of communication with them, versus someone who wasn't interviewed as part of the pool, they would receive just the email communication, saying the position's been closed. So, I think that covers that part of the slide.
So, then, onto the really fun stuff, the onboarding process. So, that's our next slide for your review. An important piece of the onboarding process, thank you. An important piece of the onboarding process is to know the history of where we once were and where we are now. Interestingly enough, I don't think anyone is longing for the nostalgia of a 40-page PDF that was kind of sideways copied, kind of not. So, we have done a full transition into an electronic onboarding process. It is a hybrid, because there are, of course, a couple of things mandated, both by law and by physical presence, that cannot be done online. But our begin-hire process, so when someone accepts a position, that actually automatically initiates two email notifications. Both of those say they're hired, so just to hammer that point home a little bit stronger, one is a literal transaction of the change of their application status in the system. So, that's a traditional automatic notification that goes out, similar to those that Cynthia talked about, screened, under review, et cetera. The second notification actually generates an online dashboard for the candidate to log into, and that is the home of their new hire task list. So, that is a series of anywhere from 10 to 17 tasks, depending upon their particular position, that they would migrate through in order. They are numbered, and they are sequential, so that they can easily move through those pieces. There are tasks to include securing personal information, securing EUC information, securing their recognition or acknowledgement of completion of mandated training, such as blood-borne pathogen training. And then, it also kicks candidates out to our external partners who secure the background information. So, our candidates no longer can get an email, print an email, fill out a document, then bring that document to us, for us to look at the document, for us to type it into a keyboard, for us to submit it to validity, to get a background check, to come back. Now, it is a very simple process they can do from the comfort of home. They can simply type their information into the validity system. It gives them a sense of security, it is their personal information that they're inputting into that. And then, we are no longer the middleman, we simply await the results from that background check. One other example of a task that cannot be completed, which will make a lot of sense, obviously, the physical ANTB examination cannot be done online, but there are documents that an individual can print out. We tried to limit those PDFs to three pages or fewer, out of respect for our candidates and their printing needs. So, it's a three-page document that gives them everything they need to include the required forms. So, once they would move through that online task list, they would actually be paired with one of our HR team members. It could be the directors, the advisors, or any of our assistants can support them through this process. And they would move through that checklist, we would continually check in with them to make sure that they're progressing, address any concerns they have, any technological issues they may be having. We actually welcome individuals into our own offices to utilize our technology services to complete that process if necessary. And if they have not completed all of the tasks, that generates a contact from one of our team members, just to touch base with them, to make sure that everything's going okay, do they have any questions about the process. Once they have completed all of the tasks, something that runs kind of parallel to that process is that we actually prepare their information for coming-before-you board, for the approval of their hire, which is a really exciting time for us. That also sets in motion what their start date will be, so we can confirm that with the administrators. So, everything we have to that point is a tentative start date until we do secure board approval. And then, once board approval is secured, as you all know, typically, the Wednesday following a board meeting, we welcome new staff to our new employee orientation, which our recruitment team also kicks off for them. And that new hire orientation is an initial orientation, about a two to two-and-a-half-hour process, where they come in and we bring them up-to-date on all things they need to know from an employee transactional perspective to be prepared for their work. And then, finally, the most exciting time is when they have completed that process, they have secured board approval, and they are reporting to work in our buildings or at our sites to support our students and our staff. So, I guess we'll open the floor for any questions you have about those workflows for our team.
Well, first, thank you for the streamlined, easy-to-follow flow chart. I just have two general questions, and I know you, you probably mentioned it, launch date, this is, this is current now, right?
Correct.
Launched when?
Do you mean the onboarding process or the whole?
The whole thing.
That's been in place a minimum of, in this structure, a minimum of a year, but at least two years since we came onboard.
Okay, so, this is the first time you've laid it out this, in this streamlined fashion?
In a flowchart manner, yes.
Okay.
We had what was previously called SOP, so it was just a written document.
Right.
And Dr. Faust gave us the great idea to put it in this format, so it was easy to see.
Makes it clear.
Yeah.
Second question, and I guess I'm, I'm asking with reference to the, the old responses. Does the computer trigger a response along the way, the same way it did before?
It does. So, the system that we utilize has not changed.
Okay.
In as much as we still utilize TalentEd recruit and hire, which is the posting and the application site. But some of those email templates and notifications have been refined by Cynthia and her team, have been a bit more detailed. So, a good example she used was the indication that we may need more information about licensure.
Right.
That template's been reviewed, it's been updated, and is more frequently sent out than in past years.
So, it doesn't flash pending, pending for however long period of time?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes.
And last but not least, you mentioned, I think, Jody, you said, if the application is on file, how would one get into the flow if they had never filed an application?
Great question, yeah. That's what we would want to know.
Gremlins, it's another gremlin?
Well, yeah. I mean, sometimes people pass, you know, hey, here's a resume, blah, 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 like, oh, it's a friend, and it's just like, well, you know, that's fine to do, but they need to apply as well. So, they shouldn't be interviewing unless they have applied. So, you know, we were trying not to, we don't, we don't have anybody doing the resume pass to, hey, interview this person. It's like, no, they have to, they have to apply, just like everyone else, and be, you know, go through the process, so.
So, is that the first time you can check that?
Well, if they send us, well, I wouldn't know if someone had interviewed somebody until that, that hadn't applied, until they tried to hire them. And now, I mean, I haven't had that happen this year, but, I mean, that could have happened.
Gremlins do fly.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Other questions coming, Scott?
I just have a question about when someone rescinds their offer. How long does it take to get that posted again, or go to the next candidate? Because when they accept the offer, write is pulled from the site. Do we ever just go back and say, hey, can we just talk to the next person? Or how long is that circle to fill that position?
Yes.
We don't like that process.
I don't either. I tell you.
Our administrators don't like that process either of rescinding an offer.
Yeah. Well, the, the posting actually doesn't come down until the, a person actually accepts the offer. So, but what, what could happen is, accept the offer, we close the position, they're in the process of doing new hire paperwork, and then they decide, or maybe get another offer. Then, it would be like, boom, bring it right back up.
Okay.
And it is the same posting? So, as an example, Jody and I were candidates, I joined the team, I decided, okay, I can't do that. The posting goes back up, and Jody doesn't have to reapply.
Right.
So, it, her application would then still be active. So, it's not a lot of work for those candidates who are already in the pool.
And so, would that process be reach out to the hiring person and say, hey, it's open again, do you have someone in mind? If not, let's just repost it.
Exactly.
Oh, good, okay.
I have a question about the hiring manager. You said it could be a principal, or possibly a team? So, it's up to the principal to decide which format they're going to use?
Well, the hiring manager is always, in, in that situation, the principal. Now, the interview panel, so the principal would select, if they had an interview, you know, they would want a panel of people, so it depends on the position, they would select their panel. Or like, if I am filling a position in my department, I would select who I want on the panel.
So, is there a certain criteria that you all set, or it's up to the principal?
It's up to the principal, but it should be someone who is going to work, either work directly with the person, or have knowledge of the position.
Thank you.
Any others?
I just really appreciate you guys taking time to walk us through it, so we can have a more detailed understanding of this process. So, thank you so much for explaining it and walking through it.
So thank you so much for explaining it and walking through it with us.
You're welcome.
And I wanted to thank you also, because that's where we ran into problems with people telling us they applied. And then we're in the middle, and they're saying, I never heard anything. So at least with this, you can check it quickly.
Yes.
You can say, and then we're not in the middle, because you don't want to say you're lying, and I don't want to say you're lying, but somewhere the truth is in the middle. So this helps a lot clear up the muddy waters. And to help to say, well, they got this, but they weren't able to get this from you. You did this on this day. We can go back and tell people, and you need to check, and that helps a lot. So we do appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall, are the participants here yet? Okay, board, with your permission, we'll go back to community comment before moving any further. Is that all right with you, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Community comment policy. First person, persons?
Good evening, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, board. At convocation, you heard me mention some of the members of NEAKCK who work tirelessly to advocate for our kids. I've asked a few of them to come tonight to share with you a bit of our work. We have a deep appreciation for the need to recruit more people who look like our kids to KCKPS. Racial justice is a topic we make a priority. We don't just talk the talk, we put our resources and time into it. And here today to tell you about some of that work is Jamila Harris-Smith. Michael Rebny and Michelle Lee was not able to join us, but she has sent what she was going to share.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jamila Harris-Smith, and every day I show up at Eisenhower Middle School to empower young people to be productive members of society as a school counselor. I stand before you today as a 2018 KSDE Dialogue Summit presenter. This is sponsored by the Professional Standards Board of Kansas State Department of Education. My topic, Beyond Reading, Writing, and Arithmetic: The Three Rs of the Twenty-First Century. Recruit, Reward, and Retain Teachers of Color. This is something that is real to me and became evident when I was hired on from a classroom teacher to a school counselor. Five years ago, the school district decided to put counselors into every elementary school. I arrived early for our first meeting and politely excused myself to go to the restroom to prepare for the meeting. When I came back, they had just began, and everyone was in a circle to begin a getting-to-know-you activity. As I looked around the room of thirty-one new hires, I was the only visible person of color. Thirty-two new people hired, and I'm the only one that I can tell looks like the students that I serve in our school district. I was disappointed and decided that there was something that needed to happen. So when I think about my topic, recruit, reward, and retain, recruit, reward, and retain are both nouns and verbs. They can be used both as a person, place, and thing, and they're also action words. When you recruit, when you're a recruit, you've enlisted in something. But to actually go out and recruit someone means you have to enlist them. They may not be fully trained, so therefore we need to reward them. A reward is a thing, giving some type of recognition, but it's also a verb, to be recognized for service. A lot of times, once we get teachers in, we don't reward them. There is no recognition for the service that they've given. And lastly, to retain. Add ER to it, and it's a retainer. It's that thing that holds something in place. Our teachers are holding our kids in place. They go home to environments that most of us could not imagine. But we have to be active. We have to retain them. We have to keep our teachers that we have recruited and rewarded. We have to keep them engaged in service. So, we've heard from the board, and tonight I felt like the HR report was all over my comment for tonight. We've heard from the board. They've asked for the numbers for people of color, they've asked for the number of hires, and they've requested a change. We cannot keep using the same excuse, they didn't apply.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Faust. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michael Rebny. I teach at Wyandotte High School. I'm also on the NEAKCK Executive Board and on the Minority Affairs Committee. I wanted to first share a note from my, as Jen mentioned, from my colleague, herself a great experienced teacher and also a teacher of color. And this is from her. "I'm a proud product of KCKPS. I attended Claude Hike, Arrowhead, and then Wyandotte High School. I love my teachers for what they had to offer because they were great at teaching their content. But what I yearned for was a teacher I could relate to on a personal level, one that could understand my personal struggles without judging me or trying to make me fit into the world they grew up in, which for most of my teachers was far different than the streets of KCK. But that is why I became a teacher, to be that person students could look up to and relate to, because I walked the streets they walked and attended the schools they attended. But then I began to wonder, if so many people I grew up with became teachers and many students I have taught over the years have become teachers, then why aren't these people choosing a career with KCKPS? Why are we losing our homegrown students to other districts? And this train of thought is what sparked conversations about teacher recruitment efforts in KCKPS." So I just, I'd like to add to something that Ms. Folks also mentioned, that the Teachers Association, myself and a couple of other teachers are partnering with her to start a teacher ambassador program so that we can also kind of build the relationship piece that's so essential to recruiting teachers, and I think in particular teachers of color, who I think are in high demand around the country, but through a teacher liaison could maybe get looks into a classroom of a teacher ambassador, who's somebody who could go to talk to some of these teacher recruits and say, hey, here's what my day-to-day life is like. Here's what, you know, here are the benefits of teaching in KCK and so forth. And then the second thing I would add is, I'm partnering with this effort just because I so value my colleagues of color in my building. I lean on them constantly. I do bring some expertise in English and science in which I teach, but, you know, as a white man, structural racism was set up to benefit me. And so I don't always understand the experiences that my students, many of them students of color, are experiencing as they try to navigate their path through college, career, and so forth. So this is something that's really valuable to my career and essentially research-backed and just experientially valuable for the kids. So I wanted to express the association's support of that effort as well.
The last piece, oh, the last piece I might mention that we were able to do is this summer, we were able to send five members to a national conference on racial and social justice to help us grow and better our own understanding on these topics that are hard to talk about and broad and very nuanced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Reports of the superintendent?
So, health insurance renewal. We'd ask that the Kansas City School Board, Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the health insurance renewal effective January first, two thousand and nineteen, as submitted by Dr. Kelly Mather, Chief Operating Officer, and by Kristen Woodbury, Executive Director of Business, and as recommended by myself.
Good evening, board, Dr. Faust. I'm here this evening to introduce, Dave Kroll here is from CBIS. They are our partner in insurance and work with our insurance committee every year. And he's going to give you a brief summary for our recommendation for the renewal of insurance.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, Dr. Nguyen, board members. As you know, we work very, very closely with Dr. Mather and with Kristen and the insurance committee. We begin the process in, actually in the winter months, and process throughout the spring and into the summer to negotiate a renewal. The Blue Cross renewal came down initially at six-point-seven percent, and claims experience improved, and we were able to get it down to five percent, which is far better than the majority of the school districts we work with. And I think what's really important to know is you have one of the best menus of offerings for your employees. You have nine different plans, four of which are free, two which support FSA and HSA contributions. And this renewal does not have any changes to the benefits. So you have a very competitive renewal on the medical side. The dental, the vision, and the life insurance are also all renewing without any change. So with that being said, I'd entertain any questions you may have about the process or the recommendation.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Does this just apply, does it apply to the administrative staff as well, all these prices, or is there a different price for them?
Well, the pricing that you see are the rates that will be delivered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
For all the employees in the district?
For all the employees and the administrators. Is that correct?
Doesn't matter what your position is.
It does not.
Entertaining motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving in second to approve the district health insurance renewal. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, our next item on the agenda is referencing our District Continuous Improvement Plan, our end-of-year report. We would ask that the Kansas City Board of Education receive the District Continuous Improvement Plan end-of-year report as an information item, as submitted by Dr. Strickland, Mrs. Clay, Dr. Manuel, Dr. Tucker Nevels, Dr. Shaw, and Dr. Villaros.
Villiaras.
Villiaras.
Sorry.
And as recommended by myself. And what you'll see is they're going to give an overview, however, at our board retreat, we're going to do an in-depth overview of everything that's within it. If you will bring your attention, you have every school's data right by your hands. So what we want to do is give you the opportunity, is they give you an overview for you to go back, digest, make comments. And then when we come back, you'll have all your questions, or you may have some of your questions answered. But our executive directors and the deputy is here, are here to present.
Good evening. Thank you again. Board, I want to express appreciation. I know you have been patiently waiting for this end-of-the-year report, but we have some transitional things to go through. But now that we have had the opportunity to do that, and Dr. Faust has had an opportunity to look at some of the data and insert some of his thinking on how we move forward as we have analyzed that data, you will see that, at least when we get to the end of this presentation, you'll see, at least on a high level, what we have analyzed at the district level. And then you'll see some of the things that Dr. Faust has asked of us to be incorporated as we move forward. As he mentioned, the book that you have in front of you is all of this data that we're going to share with you, but it's broken down by each school. And so he's forecasted we will spend some time with the board in the future when you have some time to digest that and talk about our work a little bit and more in depth. So tonight, what you'll hear from us is the district overview at the systems level and talk about, at a high level, some of the kind of big priority points that we're going to focus on moving forward. And then you'll get an opportunity to see the data related to that. So, starting back with kind of this foundation, you have seen this over and over, and so this is a review lesson for you. We have our mission, our vision, I mean, to be a top-ten school district, and I have to commend Dr. Faust. He has come in and grabbed this with two hands and been pushing us to keep this in mind as we do our work, that we need to be a top-ten school district. And that means there's some things that we need to do and do well. To become that top-ten school district, we have to achieve this goal. It means we are exiting each student high school, from high school, college, and career-ready for global society, performance is on track and on time all throughout our system. That means that they are graduating with a minimum of at least one of these diploma-plus endorsements. You've heard that and seen that several times, and we still are on the path to make sure that every one of our students graduates with a minimum of at least one of those endorsements. And to do that, we have to live our mission every day, inspiring excellence every grown-up, every child. And so today, I've said a little bit of this, but you'll get a chance from this report to see the review of our end-of-year Continuous Improvement Plan data. We'll share some of our priorities for this eighteen-nineteen school year, and we identify on a broad sense some of the next steps that we're going to focus on to continue to try to move forward in the work. This is a slide that you have seen several times. I won't go over it, but it is a summary of an analysis that we did from the twenty-sixteen cohort, and it really was foundational in identifying some of the things we need to focus on. Summed up very concisely, what it means is that if we want to graduate our students and prepare for success, they have to achieve in the area of academics, I mean, attendance, behavior, and courses passed. If we can get students on track in those areas, the likelihood of them graduating successfully is high. So we had to focus our efforts in those areas. And this data, and this slide summarizes what that looked like throughout our system. So it basically said that attendance, behavior, and courses passed are important to keep our students on track for graduation. From that analysis, these are the priorities that we identified, that we had to have clear goals in our system, we had to have effective relationships, and we had to have high expectations. If we focused in these areas, we would increase the likelihood of our students graduating and graduating on time. You've seen this model. I know you can't read it, but hopefully it's familiar to you in some fashion. And when we get a chance to dig deeper into the work, we will talk about this a little more specifically. But this is our model of instruction. This is kind of foundational from our work. We build all of our work from this particular model of instruction. And that takes us to our theory of action. Our theory of action is if the leaders do what they're supposed to do at the district level, that will allow the school leaders to do what they're supposed to do. They will be empowered to do that. If school leaders are empowered to do what they are supposed to do, they will empower classroom teachers to do what they need to do to be effective. And when those three things are working in concert together, our students will perform. And it's important that our theory of action be lived with some fidelity, and that's a word that Dr. Faust is using over and over with us. But if we do that well, our students will perform. With that, I'm going to pass it to our executive directors to walk you through the data and where we ended last year with our District Continuous Improvement Plan data.
Good evening. Good evening. I'll talk a little bit about the leaders' data. And so this is building principals and assistant principals. And then someone will share with you teachers' data on their growth plans, and then we have the student data. So we have three goals for our leaders. The first is that data-driven focus on student achievement, and in particular, it's monitoring progress on individual student achievement goals. And we were hoping that people would be at eighty percent, that was our goal. And in fact, you can see there, we got forty-four percent, nearly forty-five at the applying level, and a nice proportion, nearly the remainder, at the developing level. You can see where we have some work to do there. And so it's that developing, moving up to applying, and we're going to reference this when we talk about next steps. The second goal for leaders is ongoing evaluations with multiple data points for continuous improvement of instruction. This is where school leaders provide feedback to teachers related to their instruction. Again, we had an eighty percent goal, eighty percent at the applying level. And so you can see here, thirty-two percent of our leaders are at the applying level with that. Again, a large chunk at the developing level, which means we need to move them up one more step and will be where we need to be. And so again, that's our focus, and you'll hear it referenced in the next steps. This third goal, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, sometimes we call it GVC. Students have the opportunity to learn the critical content. Again, eight percent of leaders at the applying level, and this looks kind of similar to the other ones. About fifty percent of the leaders are at the applying level with this goal, with another big chunk at developing. And so again, focusing on moving that group that's at developing, they're getting there, they're not yet at the applying level, and so we have our work cut out for us this year. Those are the building leaders' goals, and so Dr. Miguel?
Yes.
Has the classroom goals.
Good evening, board, Dr. Faust. I'm going to share with you the classroom, and this is the data collected by principals, and it's around the three goals that we had for teachers. So the first goal that we had for teachers is communicating learning goals and feedback, specifically providing rigorous goals and learning scales. And our goal was, okay, I think I went, eighty percent of teachers will be at the applying level. And when we look at the data collected, we see that we have close to forty percent of the applying level. And when we look at the data collected, we see that we have close to 40% at the applying level with almost 40% at the developing level. So as Dr. Vivero said, the goal for this year is moving those teachers who are at the developing level into the applying level. The next goal was establishing and maintaining effective relationships with students, again, with a goal of 100% of teachers at the developing level and specifically around understanding students' interests and backgrounds. When we look at the end of year data, we see 53.64 at the applying level with almost 40% at developing. The good news about being at the developing level is we know the teachers know the strategy. That's how you get to the developing level. So the work is now to get them to applying, which means are they monitoring for the desired effect? And the third goal that we had for teachers was communicating high expectations for all students, specifically demonstrating value and respect for all students with the goal of 100% of teachers at the developing level. When you look at the data, 29% were at the developing, but 63 at the applying. So for this goal, we did meet our, our target. And, and for the previous one, we did also. For next year, we know we want to move to a percentage of teachers at the applying level because we know that's when we truly have an effect on students. The next set of data is the socio-emotional, and Dr.?
Shaw.
Shaw. He's going to.
Good evening, board. Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
So our socio-emotional data is where we're going to first start talking about what our students did this past year. And this is just a list of our goals from last year. We were striving for an attendance rate of greater than 95% attendance and a chronic absence rate of less than 5%. And then we also were looking at our relationships. And that was based through our measuring and collection of monitoring of data of referrals and suspensions. And you'll remember that we didn't want to set a target there because we certainly did not want to place a target or any type of limitations that would go against our code of conduct and what we've decided is a system to support. So in regards to social, or to the attendance rate, our end of year, that's what E O Y stands for. I apologize, we didn't write that out. The end of years, we met, 93.2 of our students had a grade, had a 95 percent, had an attendance of 95% or higher.
That's good.
For those that were chronically absent, at the end of the year, we had 19.3% of our students that met the definition of being chronically absent. And a reminder of that is missing 10% or more of the school days. So if we have 170 school days, that would be 17 days that they would have missed. That would put them in the category to say that they were chronically absent. So we're at 19.3. This slide, actually, I found an error just before we came up tonight, so please bear with me. You're going to see in your documents, you have the same slide twice, and I regret that we did not capture that. But this slide should say percentage of students with one referral or an office referral. And that percentage was 8.7% of the students had one office referral. And the percentage of students with two or more office referrals was 11.3. So if you have your notes and want to make that, we'll get that corrected and make sure that Susan, Ms. Westphal, has that, and we can get that to you. But this is our end of year suspension data as well. And our end of year suspension data, our overall percentage of students with one percentage was 7%. And our end of year percentage of students with two or more suspensions was 5.4%. And that is our data around the socio-emotional. Dr. Nevilles, Tucker Nevilles is going to take us through the academic piece. Oh, oh, see, there's that same slide twice. I apologize. There we go, Dr. Nevilles.
Good evening. I'd like to start by saying, as you think about the adult members and where they were for applying, in our model of instruction, applying means that we are able to get the desired result. And as you know, we didn't always hit those 80% of everyone, but we were like 40%. I want you to hear that as I go through the academics because there's a direct correlation with that. Okay? I didn't talk about early childhood. Early childhood, 85% of our students are kindergarten ready. We are at 65.1% scored kindergarten readiness. At the elementary school, K to 2, measure of academic progress, we have MAP. Our goal was 60% at grade level, and another goal was at 20% at college and career level. Currently, 35.1% met grade level in reading and 32.4% made grade level in math. If you think about where we were for applying, those scores are correlating. So when Dr. Viveros and Dr. Miguel talked about moving our adults to applying, that's the focus that we are urgently trying to do for this coming school year. 11.5% meets college and career in reading and 5.8 meets college and career in math. The Kansas Assessment, known as the CAP, grades 3 to 10 ELA. Our goals were 70% level 2, 30% at level 3. Where are we? 43.7% at level 2 or higher and 14% level 3 are higher. Moving on, let me see, did I skip anything? Yes. The Kansas Assessment for CAP, for grades 3 to 10 ELA, we both have 70 and 30. It's 43.7% and 14%. And for math is 3. Kansas Assessment Program for CAP for math, that's what I'm trying to say. We have the same goals. And where are we? 47.1% and 12%. Now, middle and high, all courses pass. Our goals were 95% at middle school and 85% at high school. For the first semester, we were at 59.3% and second semester, 57.4%. Individual plan of study, that's go, that's along with our diploma plus. And we want all of our ninth graders to have one in place. And our goal was to have 100% at a, having an IPS. And right now, we have a 92% IPS in progress. And some of the reasons why we have a 92% because not all of our freshmen are first-year freshmen. So we have to work with all of our freshmen to get there. And then also, some of our students come in at different times of the year. And so we haven't completed that process with them. High school, ACT, the 11th grade, our goal was 30% to score at 21 or above. We're at 12.5%. Our graduation rate, that information will be available in October. But we are anticipating some good numbers with that. We are. We are really anticipating some great numbers.
So board, we're going to, and have been taking a close look at this. But this is the product of what our work was last year. There's some room for improvement. We have some glimmers of, of things to be happy about, but we don't want to sit on our moles, our laws at all. We want to move forward. And to do that, we have to continue to remember these priorities. And so what Dr. Faust has done, based upon his analysis of the data and his vision to increase an emphasis around academics, he's added some new targets for us. And so what you have in your PowerPoint and what you see up here are the new targets that we have included in this year. This increases the, the emphasis, emphasis around academics. And we have shared this information with the schools. So we're going to continue to focus on the things that we shared with you. But these are the new things that we have added to raise a level of emphasis around academics in our, in our system. So how do we get there is we continue with our priorities. We do not change the course. Now, we will shift some emphasis around effective relationships and high expectations. And what that will involve is a higher emphasis around the socio-emotional development of our students. It also will be the place where we incorporate that culturally proficient pedagogy in our, in our teaching and the strategies that are supportive to our diverse population. Next steps mean, include the leveraging of the resources allocated. So give me for, to give you an example, board was gracious enough to include social workers and counselors in our system. So we need to leverage that resource to make sure that we are growing our students in the socio-emotional area. There's also been some realignment of resource, sources. Dr. Faust has shifted some of the work to strengthen the alignment from pre-K through 12 by having all executive directors report to the deputy position. And he's also charged the assistant superintendent position with strengthening our teaching and learning professional development, making sure that we have the best practices in the access of our best practices. Our teachers have access to the best practices through our instructional coaches. And in essence, what we're going to do is stay focused on the data, analyze it, identify our needs, come up with the actions based upon those formative assessments, and do formal data check-ins on a regular basis. And Dr. Faust has said that we need to continue to do the things that we're doing. We need to do them better and do them with fidelity and hold ourselves accountable to doing those things. That's the sum of what we need to do moving forward. So with that, I will pause for any questions and, and let you know, like I said, we will be going in more detail with this information when we have a board retreat time.
Questions, comments?
I have a question about the kindergarten readiness. It says 65.1% are scored kindergarten ready. How many of those kids came from our preschools or who didn't have preschool and came from other preschools? Because you guys had given us that information a couple of years ago.
I'm going to defer. I think that's about.
So that data is our students that exited, exited us as four-year-olds last year in preschool.
So how many of?
All the students in that data were students that have been in our preschool program.
Okay, so they all came from our preschool.
We have brought other data. We give the kindergarten readiness assessment in kindergarten as well, and they're working on that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is about curriculum related. We see that we're falling behind on the map, and I said this a number of times. The curriculum here is not as rigorous as it needs to be for our students to meet higher goals. If we have small reading words, if we have, if our kindergarten ready go into that classroom and they're reading, how are we challenging them to go ahead and read first grade, second grade, third grade? How are we making sure our curriculum is truly maximizing their learning capacity rather than stalling or hindering them? And I'll give you an example, so that maybe they go to a middle school in which they're challenged academically in math and reading, but they transition to a different high school or what have you that does not have that same rigor to where they can skip ahead to maybe a higher level of math. How are we addressing the, that need to really push it forward?
So a couple of things to address that, as in educational practicing or an educator who practices, that I don't believe that we should go forward and not teach the curriculum all the way down. So we, a lot of times, we think that kids know things, and so we skim versus going deep. So we have to better the, our teaching practices. So therefore, Dr. Clay's role at this point is to make sure that we're using all the best practices to make sure that our learning targets are taught with depth versus you know this, so let's go ahead and teach the next thing. They haven't gotten a full foundation. Well, they have the foundation, but they just hadn't built that. So then the other part of that is the rigor, we're, Alan King, we're setting up meetings. And so we are looking at how our curriculum aligns to the state curriculum and making sure that our kids, if they're in Kansas, doesn't matter where you come from in Kansas, but that curriculum is aligned to the Kansas standards. And so that we're not doing something opposite. Because some of the, the questions that we've had or results that I've spoken with teachers is that they teach it one way, but they're asked something totally different. So we want to make sure that there's no blurred lines in our curriculum.
Thank you.
Answered like a veteran Kansas.
Quick read. And you probably told me this before. What data shows the improvement of social and emotional well-being?
The data around the attendance, the data around the, the behavior. Those are the areas that we're going to focus on to show our impact on the socio-emotional learning that we're going to do. We still have, this year, what Dr. Faust has asked us to do is just improve those areas. Didn't give us specific numbers because we don't want to create a, an atmosphere that teachers don't feel like they can address inappropriate behaviors. But we do want to stretch ourselves to say that we want to improve those numbers. And that means leveraging a lot of the things that we have access to now, social workers, counselors. But the short answer to that is our behavior data and attendance data.
And where, tell me again, help me understand again, where does the, where does the social worker, the counselor come in?
Actually, our student service department right now is putting together a, almost like a flow chart. Very similar to, to what you saw from our HR department. But they're putting together a flow chart that would show how you insert those particular resources into the work. Give you a, a frame. You may have heard us talk about a tiered system of support.
Right, right.
And so that, the social worker and the counselor would interject themselves probably at that second tier or that third tier where students need some additional support that may not be able to be addressed through that first tier.
So in all actuality, what, what we're saying is that oftentimes, we know the targets of our students. So we want to outline a preventive way versus being reactive. And so if we go in, in the front side and start to introduce these, and these things to our students, letting teachers know who the resources are and how we can work with our students versus after the child does something, then we start to reprimand. But we need to let them know upfront, what is your goal? What is the target? Who can you talk to? And making sure that we give them those opportunities.
And on the same note, what kind of, and I can't remember, what kind of reporting requirements do we have with the pilot? The, the, I'll call it mental health pilot. What kind of reporting requirements do we have?
For the social workers?
Right. You remember the pilot that we got?
Yes, yes, that we got.
10 or 11?
And I have to defer to Ms. Garcia about the reporting requirements and Octavia about that. So I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Good evening, board. Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust. We have 11 behavioral health liaisons that are funded through the grant from the state. And we just recently received the report, and Octavia's been meeting, is our assistant director, with the state. And I have a conference call, so I'll let him speak to that.
So kind of still planning?
No, they have the report.
Okay.
So we, we are required to submit a report. It's a joint report with our community mental health partner. In this case, it would be PACES. So we're required to submit a quarterly report, November 15th, March. We're required to submit quarterly reports. And they ask specific questions about how many students were served through the pilot, how many students ensured, demonstrated increased improvement around attendance, around referrals, around behavior.
So contact hours are, are minimum or are specified or not? Just, just report how many you meet?
They're not asking for contact hours.
Okay.
That's not a specific.
Referrals.
Referrals and then all students served through the pilot.
And Angela Dunn, our behavioral health coordinator, has created, we've been working with Greg, a behavioral health referral for all of our social workers because we'll be measuring them all the same and not just isolating the 11 that are funded through the grant since we have 41. And then also an authorization to receive services from the social worker so that we can document all of that and begin to look at the data. This really just is the foundation of building the program. And so we look forward to sharing that with you in an update as we work through developing more to the program of our social workers in that tiered approach.
Thank you.
The, I have another question relating to the success rate of the technical program that we encourage students to take. Do we ever have any reporting on that in this?
For the CTE program?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Actually, in that big notebook over there, I could tell you what, what our kind of CTE numbers are. But we do track that. We track that specifically with our diploma plus endorsements. Since that is one of the endorsements that they can get, but we do track that. I just don't have it committed to memory, but I keep the notebook within a hand's reach. So I can get that to you. I'll get it to Dr. Faust, so he can get that to you.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're, thank you very much. We look forward to delving deep.
Yeah.
Next. Next.
Thank you.
Uh huh, accepted the report. Do you need, is the information item? Yes or no?
It's up to you. Typically, if you accept the report, it shows cleaner on the record, but you don't have to.
All right. Entertaining motion to accept the year-end report on District Continuous Improvement Plan? So move.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Thank you.
Our next report is, I'll make sure I'm the wrong one, our contracts for Learning Science International Observation System. And so we would ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the contract for Learning Science International Observation System as submitted by Dr. Mather, Chief Operating Officer Kelly Beach, Director of Professional Workforce Development, as recommended by myself.
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion? It's been moved in seconded. Do you want any discussion?
This is just something we've already done.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded to approve the contract. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed.
So we will draw our attention to the updated board policies. I asked that the Kansas City Board of Education approve policies updated as reviewed by our legal counsel and recommended by myself.
Entertaining motion, please?
So move.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve proposed changes to the board policies as submitted by K A S B and legal counsel. Any discussion?
I have a comment. And it seems like we're following Robert's Rule of Order for this, but there was another time when we voted and the chair made the motion, and by most things that you do with Robert Rules of Order, the chair couldn't do that. And we were told we weren't operating by the same rules. So I just want some clarity on that. Why is it that you're somewhat doing it here, but we couldn't do it there? So what are we operating by? Is it Robert's Rules of Order, or what are we doing?
We do not follow Robert's Rules of Order by specific board policy. We follow just an ordinary course of governance that would allow any member of the board to make a motion. So if the chair wanted to make a motion, the chair could make a motion, but we don't follow Robert's rules. Traditionally, the chair runs the meeting and allows other members to make motions, make seconds, but the chair could make a motion if the chair wants to.
Other questions, comments? All in favor to approve updated board policies, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. We now are at the period of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member desires to remove? Seeing none, entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Game of the bills. Any questions?
I move we pay our bills. Second.
It's been moved in second to pay our bills.
I have a question. We had talked about modification of the way this report will look. Is that to come in the future? There was going to be a little more detail to it, or was that not possible?
I think last, if I recall Dr. Jaeger, I don't recall the detail of how you wanted it, but we had talked about how this report is run from the Business Plus system, and this is how it's set up to be run. So I'm not sure that we can add additional detail. I think it was under the descriptions, if I recall correctly, under the vendors, and those are all preset up. And we then are, we utilize those descriptors to align that with the Kansas Finance Manual. So when we report the information year-end up, we're trying to get them as closely aligned. So we have limited description detail on the descriptions.
Okay, thank you.
But can we keep that in mind? Because sometimes when we ask questions, sometimes people get offended. And when things aren't clear, and we're trying to make sense of it, you know, please keep that in mind. You're saying there's, you can only give so much. And we're saying when we ask the question, please don't get offended. We're looking for clarity. We're trying to understand.
Right. Well, Ms. Page, we would welcome questions at any time about the payables or any of the items. So certainly don't take offense to that by any means. Feel free to ask. It's just that what I'm describing is the actual description under the vendor. We can't, we don't have a lot of flexibility to change that. But if we know in advance of the meeting, any of the information, we'd be happy to give you as much information as you want about it.
Okay. Thank you.
And I also think that one thing that Dr. Mather may or may not have shared with the board is that when they come in, she may not have information on every bill that's in there, so she may not have the knowledge, because it's set up in the budget item for whichever department. And so that department may have allocated funds for a specific vendor. And so she may not know exactly what that vendor is or why that money is, just falls under the guidelines of what that department is purchasing.
Also, under paying the bills, I did have a question. Last year, credit cards were removed from the schools. So have we thought, gotten feedback about how that process is going, or if modifications are needed to make it easier for purchases to be made?
I haven't done any official feedback from schools on the P cards or the purchasing cards. That decision was made so that we had more fiduciary, you know, control over the expenditures, not happening after approval process, but getting the approval process done beforehand. So to answer your question specifically, we've not done any formal requests or feedback in regards to the lack of purchasing cards. Probably had more informal feedback than formal feedback, so.
Because when I was doing the schools, that was some feedback that I received from a number of principals about thinking about revisiting that, not right now, but maybe at a later date to just maybe think about if there's any way to make it a little easier.
I think we're certainly open for the guidance and direction of the board on however you all want to handle the purchasing cards. Informal feedback is what we've received as well. Folks want to use their purchasing cards, and they're, it's much easier to have a Visa or a credit card. The fiduciary responsibility of this board and of the district, we want to caution us that we want to make sure that we have strict guidelines in place, that folks can't make acquisitions prior to approval of those acquisitions. Unfortunately, with a credit card, it's easy to make acquisitions prior to the approval process, because you're operating outside of your purchase order system. So that was the issue for that.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
So we got a little ahead of ourselves on that, because we hadn't voted on the motion before discussion. Let's make it, we'll make aware of that. There was a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. We've had discussion now. So I'll ask again to pay the bills. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Pay the bills. We now have to move into executive session. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at seven oh five, for forty-five minutes, for discussion of superintendent goals pursuant to an exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session at seven fifty with no action to follow. Need the motion? So move.
Second.
Been moved in second to, moved into executive session. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passed.